And may I have a motion to suspend Robert's rules of order?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And now we are going to move into a discussion around our capital and facilities. So, welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, sure, make sure I... I'm gonna move this a little bit closer. Um, make sure you guys can hear me, got the clicker on, all the good things. The next test is whether or not it works this far, right? So, good evening, thanks for this opportunity to share our facilities update. Carrie Dennis, District's Business Manager, for those that may watch us at a later date.
I'm Doug Sworitz, Director of Facilities for Westerville City Schools.
Scott Dorn, Deputy Superintendent.
We're gonna take the opportunity tonight to go through projects that are finishing up, and then we'll talk about projects that are coming up, and then we're gonna talk about the future.
So what have we completed really since the last time a board saw a presentation of March of 23? So one of the bond money, Minerva Park Middle School opened in August of 23. Emerson Elementary, Hanby Elementary, Whittier Elementary, and Hawthorne Elementary all finished the first segments of their job, those are multiple summers. They're entering across the board their final summer for the currently contracted work this summer. Talk about that in a second. Secured entry projects at Genoa Middle School and Walnut Springs. Those were the last two schools in the district to be brought up to the standards we have now in all of our schools, in terms of secured entries. Playground equipment upgrades, again at multiple sites, we're constantly reviewing those needs. Asphalt and concrete replacement projects, again at multiple sites. And then exterior LED lighting, we've replaced the lighting on both the buildings themselves and any pole lights on every single facility, not just school, every facility the district owns, and that's been completed. Permanent improvement, which is just as you think it is, a permanent source of money for us for capital improvements. Westerville North High School track field replacement, that happened last summer. Atrium Library, if you haven't been there, we separated the commons from the atrium and really made it a much more useful space, multipurpose space if you will. And in the science lab, there were some older modular removable walls that we've replaced with permanent walls. Flooring replacement projects, again at multiple sites, that's something we are constantly looking at. Furniture replacement, same thing, we're constantly evaluating those needs. HVAC projects, you just recommended and awarded a few of those, that's something we do on an annual basis. Again, as was noted earlier by that question, these are fiscal year '22 because normally there's about a one-year lag of start to stop, if you will, from the time it's awarded. And then roofing projects, again at multiple sites in alignment with our preventive maintenance program.
So I tend to be more of a visual person. So as you can see here at Whittier Elementary School, on the left-hand picture is the inside of the art room, which is part of the addition that was done at Whittier. The picture in the center, at the bottom of the page there, is actually looking at the backside of that addition facing the playground. And then the picture on the right is actually the hallway between the art room, and in this image it would be on the right-hand side, and the music room, which would be on the left-hand side, the opposite side of that wall. Oh, he said, oh, I forgot to work. And at Hawthorne Elementary School, as you can see in the left picture, that was post-demo of the ceiling, flooring removal, there's no power in the building at this point. Something that's interesting to note in here, about halfway through the top of that picture, you can see there are actually skylights that are a material called cow wall. And they have discolored over time, which is a process that can happen. So part of this project was to replace those, and you'll see the benefit of doing that here shortly. The bottom right-hand picture is halfway through the construction project. So some of the flooring's in, you can see the wall systems changing. There are some highlights of those blue wall runners on the bottom right-hand side of that picture that hadn't quite been painted over yet. As that project progressed, you can see in the top left-hand photo, this was probably right before they turned it back over to us. And you can still see a ladder in there, I wanted to make sure everybody could tell that that is actually a picture and not a rendering. It's a beautiful image and before we actually got to move in. At the top of that picture, you can see where some of that natural light's coming in through the replacement of those skylights. And then on the bottom right-hand side is a picture that was taken just last week. So you can see furniture systems in there, wonderful lighting, natural lighting coming through and being introduced into that space. At Walnut Springs Middle School, as mentioned, this was the last summer of the secured entry projects. On the left-hand side was actually what was originally the office. So walls were demoed out and the space was converted for an engineering classroom. And on the right-hand side is the new secured entry office. Same with Genoa Middle School. While this project utilized part of an existing, it was used for study hall and/or an old computer lab when we had those designated spaces. So you can see there that they have an attendance window, and again, the recognition of the wonderful WESA person who's retiring Anita from this location, that is now her workstation. And then on the right is what that space looks like. The principal and assistant principal and two of our WESA members moved up to that space.
So we started about what we finished, what are we working on now, really this spring and summer? So starting with bond work, we have Hanby Elementary. We're working on the gym and cafeteria, those that know that building know there's no separation currently. So we're introducing a hard wall, but also with a movable partition or overhead doors so they can still have dual purpose if they need to and want to, and I think it'll be great once it's done. And then the media center, a lot of that work's actually happening next week over spring break. Painting, new shelving, and things of that nature. Emerson Elementary, again, that contract was awarded a couple of years ago by the board, I'm sorry, a couple of weeks ago. We're not that slow, a couple of weeks ago. So it's mostly, predominantly, expansion of the clinic and a renovation of that, and that caused some upgrades to the office. And probably the biggest thing we pointed out last time, for those that know the building, is we're redoing or repainting all the exterior fire escapes. There's an extensive amount of metal, metal fire escapes and systems there. Hawthorne Elementary, we're finishing up the remaining classrooms. That's predominantly to the north end of the building. Whittier Elementary, same thing, we finished up the classrooms and the cafeteria. That's predominantly at Whittier, the southern edge of the building. Whittier Elementary, the kitchen renovation, that has not been designed and bid out yet, it's being designed currently. Again, given lead time, it will most likely be a summer of '25 construction project with contracts preceding that here in the fall, most likely. Minerva Park Middle School softball and athletic field storage buildings are both in various stages of completion. Again, the middle school opened in August of last year, but the athletics was always on a separate track to be finished, kind of congruently or just after the building was done. Safety and security upgrades, it lists external Wi-Fi, that's not so much so a student can use their Chromebook, but more importantly for security, so administrators and whatnot can use devices at all times, but obviously in the event of a critical issue. And then asphalt and concrete replacement projects, again at multiple sites, those will be this summer of '24. Permanent improvement, Westerville South, that's an ongoing project. Again, we're finishing up what's called Phase 6A and B. Walnut Springs Middle School, the football scoreboard replacement and ADA restroom. The ADA restroom is currently under design, and that's really to introduce an adult or movable changing station, which we have in a lot of our schools. Westerville North High School, a softball scoreboard replacement, which is completed, and then a backstop and complete fencing replacement at that same field, which is still underway. HVAC FY '23, remember that one-year lag time, if you will, multiple sites. So we'll be completing that work this summer. And then, kind of as just discussed, HVAC '24, we're just awarded. So we'll start the paperwork, approve things to get it ordered, and look to have the work completed next summer. Roofing, ongoing every year. And then balcony enclosures is something we've added in terms of it's actually under design. We should be taking, putting out for bids here shortly. But at McVay, Wilder, and Heritage, their cafeterias are open to the, or commons are open to the second floor, and they voiced concern of a noise and other issues for, I guess, some time. So this will address that and make those spaces a little more usable for them.
At Hawthorne, as you can see, when we talk about some ongoing projects there, the cafeteria's in the bottom-left picture, that'll get flooring, paint, lighting in that space. And then to the right, you can see a classroom that will get flooring, casework, paint, lighting, and then the teaching wall, which the picture in the top center is actually of a completed classroom. So you can see what we talked about when we look at flooring, a fresh coat of paint, and improvement to the teaching wall and some of the lighting there as well. The furniture is actually current in that space, and that is new furniture. It came in ahead of schedule. Minerva Park Athletic Facility, so you can see the infield of the softball field there. So we're just waiting on grass to grow. Looked like today we might've got that final snow of the season before we can really make transition, hopefully. So hopefully we'll see some green grass soon. In the bottom-right picture is taken at the angle in which that athletic facility building is actually gonna be placed. It'll be a replica of what is at Walnut Springs Field. So you can see that it'll be closest to the Minerva Park pool. And this is all behind Hawthorne Elementary School. Westerville South, so Westerville South's been an ongoing project. We found the picture in the top-left, which I thought was fun, to remind everybody what the front of Westerville South High School started like. If you've ever been in the entryway of Westerville South, you can see those poles that are holding up that second floor. So it's had some change over time. The bottom-center picture is pre-the addition of the canopy, and the right-hand side was taken just a couple of weeks ago. Intentional design around the peak of the roof and the lighting there as well. They can see the clock. All right, so what's next? The district has a facility master plan. The work that we've discussed tonight, a lot of which is completing, is part of Phase 1. So we are looking at Phase 2. Okay, so this is the district's currently established 10-year facility master plan. In April of 2019, the Board of Education established the scope and timeline of the district's facility master plan based on recommendations from a committee report. The importance behind the development of this plan was to complete projects beyond patchwork, building projects, and address the whole building issues that were a result of the building's age and the development of the teaching environment. The facility plan provides appropriate space for enrollment needs. We added Minerva Park and Minerva France, and this has allowed the district to address enrollment at our elementary and middle schools. This plan was developed by our community to address the oldest buildings in our district, also addressing the safety and security updates to all existing buildings. Projects specified in the first five years of the facility master plan include, as mentioned, the new elementary and middle school in the southern end of the district, renovations and additions at Ann Hurst and Whittier Elementary Schools, renovations at Hawthorne Elementary School, infrastructure updates at Emerson, Hanby, and Longfellow Elementary Schools, and safety and security updates at all schools. Completion of these projects means the following for our school's students and community. Buildings will receive much-needed modern equipment and system upgrades so they can support a technologically advanced education that allows graduates to be more competitive in college and in the workplace. The work in the first phase of the facility master plan is finishing up, and we are ready to discuss the second phase.
So, I just have a, yeah, a question. No, thank you. I think just for people that may not know, how many buildings do we have in our school district? How many schools?
How many schools do we have? So we have 24 school buildings, and the academic enrichment center as well.
And then, when you talk about age of them, what are we looking at as terms of like, when we start to think about when we should be updating them? Some of these are quite old buildings.
Yes, so in the first phase of the facility master plan, it addressed buildings that were 55 years of age or greater and Ann Hurst. And to understand that Ann Hurst was our last district building that was still open concept. So while it was built in 1970, it was moved into the first phase of the facility master plan so that we could address that educational experience for those kids.
Thank you.
No problem. And the second phase of this...
Hang on.
Oh, more, yes, so sorry.
So as you think about all we have accomplished, and there's a lot there that we have accomplished, and it has been a phenomenal amount of work that wouldn't have happened at all without the approval of the voters. So I am wondering what your perception is of the level of fidelity to what we promised we would do? We made promises, we said we would do X, Y, Z. How have we done?
I would report that we've done a great job. As you can see and demonstrated in the pictures at Whittier, that beautiful art space that was never had. It was a typical classroom, standard square footage. At times, depending on the building needs, because we needed another elementary school, you would've had potentially art on a cart if we needed that space for kids for a general education classroom. We continue to adjust our plans as we have learned from this experience, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that'll look like moving forward. But I'd like to believe that we've met what we said we would do.
I think it's really important always to look back to see if we did what we said we were going to do. My perception, and you know, it's based on all of the work that you bring to us and all of the things that my eyes show me and the resolutions we approve and all of those components, is that we have a very high level of fidelity, even though changes need to be made, we're very clear when that happens. But I think it's extremely important that we always look to see, are we holding true to what we told the community we'd do?
Yes.
And as of, just to follow up to that, two of those promises were new at elementary and new middle school, right? Because we had a lot of overcrowding, so could someone just talk real quickly about, I know we've talked about it, but just as part of this, what that's meant in terms of kind of rightsizing student populations? And have we been able to do that, right?
We have been able to do that. Our middle schools definitely sit at a much more equal enrollment levels, I would say. Kids do have the opportunity to go to schools that are closer to their homes in that respect by opening Minerva Park Middle School. And even with Minerva France Elementary School, our elementary enrollments are definitely at a better spot overall. We recognize that there's developments that seem to be popping up in different spots that would not have probably been anticipated, and we feel that we're ready and prepared for that as well at this time.
Great.
Yeah, it, yes, thank you for that reminder too. We were able to expand all-day kindergarten by opening Minerva France and redistricting our elementary school enrollment. It freed up some spaces to allow the expansion of all-day kindergarten to meet the request of the community.
Great, thank you, because I know that was something that was really important to this district, especially the middle school. And just a sense that when you put way too many middle school kids in a building, right, it's a little hard to manage. So what I've been hearing anecdotally is that that situation has really improved, and some improved behavior, just there's a little bit more breathing room for those middle school bodies.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We had two buildings that had enrollments of nearly 900.
Almost 1,000.
Almost 1,000, and they all sit around that 700 mark today.
Much better, thank you.
Any other questions? Because I'm excited with the clicker. Okay. So the second phase of the facility master plan addresses buildings that are all greater than 50 years of age, most being greater than 55 at the time construction would start if this were to be supported. With our oldest building listed here being Huber Ridge Elementary School, which is 61 years of age right now. So other buildings in that list are Charrington Elementary School, Mark Twain Elementary, Robert Frost Elementary, Blendon Middle School, Walnut Springs Middle School, Westerville North High School's on there, although it turns 50 in 2025. So we're not quite there, but we're gonna be there soon. We also have additional facility needs at Emerson, Hanby, and Longfellow, that'll be an ongoing, as well as continued safety and security updates at all the schools. That also had kind of a two-phase to it, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. All right, come on. I had a good run.
So how do we continue the great efforts that were made in terms of the planning of the 10-year plan, the implementation of the first five years, and now moving into discussion on the next five years or Phase 2 of the facilities master plan? We've taken kind of a three-pronged approach to date, and so that starts first with the Westerville City Schools, and really working with the team, many of them are in the room tonight. So starting with the Board of Education, school administration, whether that's the cabinet, the executive leadership team, interim superintendents even attended some meetings recently, treasurer, et cetera. School administrators, predominantly at the principal level. So we're making sure we're getting that local touch as we review each building, working through some planning efforts. Then operations, I think it's really important we include, whether it's custodial, food service, technology, IT, et cetera. They have building needs, they have building discussions, things that will allow us to, you know, deliver education in a 21st century methodology. But who's our partner in all this? Just as Phase 1, we're recommending, and the board already took action in December, to approve a resolution to move forward with implementing a process with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. And maybe more for the public than the board, I was just gonna read a little bit in terms of what is that? We're working with the state, what does that mean? And so again, the Ohio School Facilities Construction Commission, this is straight from their website, manages Ohio's school facility programs, which provide support for the construction and renovation of public K-12 schools. So they provide money, but they also provide process, and I think it's important for the public to know, they set uniform rules, procedures, and standardized documents for state and school construction. What that means is with their money comes some opportunities in terms of a process that we should ideally follow, which we did in Phase 1. Their main program is called the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. That's a program they have specifically, as mandated from the state legislator, to address the entire facility needs of a district from grades K through 12. But we at this time are not eligible for their funding in that program. So just as we did in Phase 1, we can participate in what they call the Expedited Local Partnership Program, better known as ALP. ALP in short is a chance for any district to undertake a portion, as the district deems appropriate, of their overall master plan. So while we have 24 buildings, we have various needs, addition, renovation, build new, it's the district's opportunity to say, we're gonna do a discrete portion. We're gonna identify what that is within the state's rules, partner with them, and then essentially sign agreement. The board takes action with their governing body. Now, talk about the fact the state has process, rules, parameters. If there's something the district, the board specifically wants, whether it's additional square footage, a certain finish, we always hear about Terezo, that's something the state will not co-fund, if you will. Someone mentioned an auditorium, they will not co-fund that, that would be all district money. That's called what's called locally funded initiative, and we did have a few of those in the first phase. And then ultimately, OFCC to date, they do a lot of their work in-house, but they brought a company called Future Think. What's important there is they presented, we just got the information over a week ago, and then their enrollment specialist, and we got the latest projection from their consultant of where the enrollment's projected to go over the next 10 years. That's again how they want another part of their process, they look 10 years out. And I think we're gonna talk about that a little bit later. In terms of other team members we've brought on board in the short term, we've brought on board Shore Architects, they're doing what's called the reassessment. So in 2017, the state of Ohio, at no charge to Westerville City Schools, undertook a full assessment. They brought in architect and engineers, walked every single building, and assessed under their guidelines the 24 points in the building, systems, finishes, et cetera, and said, these are items we believe warrant and merit replacement or upgrade in a, basically from building operator standpoint. So we brought Tony Shore in and his firm to redo the assessment, because those are seven years old. What's changed? And really do it on our behalf as we sit down on your behalf to negotiate and talk with the state. Alfred Construction was brought on mostly to help with cost estimates and constructability. It's important to note, Tony Shore is only looking at the buildings that exist today. Alfred and then Design Group, that I'll talk to simultaneously here, are looking at the buildings in terms of what are our needs as we find them on the left with the district. Where do we have additions, reprogramming, changes we need to be doing to make these buildings more efficient and more conducive to 21st century learning and how we deliver education to our students. So that's what Alfred's doing in terms of cost estimating, and Design Group's looking at those three bullet points that we'll walk through some images here in a second. They're looking at building needs, floor plans and program, again, that's analyzing building use, realignment. Because often we've just made do, if you will, in terms of putting people, we have real estate, not necessarily we'd like them to be or need them to be in possibly a team teaching environment. And then construction costs, we'll walk you through what's called light, moderate, or heavy, and how that can maybe help explain some of the costing we're seeing.
I have a quick question, I think for the public. You said that the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, we're not currently eligible for that. What makes us eligible for that?
So it's a system that, it's a system that looks at all the public schools, and it's based on equity. We are a 35% share, as it talks about there, and a couple of things happen. Number one is they go down the list from those that got roughly 99%, all the way to 1%. But they can only forecast out two years at a time. While we're not that far off on the list in terms of quantity, it's really based on the state legislators and their two-year annual budget. How much are they willing to fund of school construction? Then applying that against all the schools ahead of us, again, in terms of their master plan, their total state share of their Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. So it's predicted to be a few years out, but it's very subjective to, and at the whim, if you will, of the state legislators.
Thanks.
So we're gonna, we're gonna walk you through some of the work that we've been doing related to the second phase of the facility master plan. We'll talk about buildings assessments and the needs that were identified through some of these exercises, block and stack plan, program realignment. So we're looking at where classroom sizes may be small, where we need more of our specialized learning classrooms, otherwise known sometimes as SLCs. And then construction costs, that light, moderate, and heavy, it's referred to as alterations, it's part of the renovation, so where a lot of work, some work, and light work need to be done. I'll go through that a little bit more in a minute. So I'm gonna start with Charrington, I'm gonna go really into-depth on this one, and then we'll kind of back off a little bit, otherwise we will be here all night long. I can get really deep into it. So Charrington Elementary School was built in 1967, and you can see the outline in blue is the original part of the building. It had an addition in 1968, again in 1972. And then in 2002, there was an addition and then a renovation in the interior part of the building. And then in 2021, that is the secured entry project, as identified in the first phase of the facility master plan. This is the block and stack image that you can see. What we identified for Charrington's needs is additional specialized learning classrooms, or SLCs. Exterior doors are not double doors, it makes it difficult getting the high-flow traffic. You know, let's think when kids are coming and going from school, when there might be a school event. We satellite our food from high school satellite kitchen to our elementary schools. It's a single door that they've gotta put the carts through, it makes it difficult at times. And then anytime they're receiving product, so a pallet of paper comes in, they have to offload that pallet of paper, it can't fit through the doors. Additionally, their music and art classrooms are undersized, and missing the storage support spaces for those classrooms as well. And student dining is undersized. And student dining is undersized. So what you're seeing here in this image is much like what we identified at Woody Ear to add that art and music space that's appropriate for that educational experience, along with the support, storage spaces there, and an addition. It is offset like this, this is not the design, I want to make sure I stress that, and always possible, you'll see a lot of images tonight, they are not the designs, it's just understanding where it might best fit, not only on the property, but the building, and also with the flow in the building. So there is addition of a set of restrooms, some small group instruction spaces, and breakout spaces for our teachers to use as well. Student dining expands just slightly into what is currently our courtyard at that building that would just pull that space in there, allow it to be usable within that dining space, create some table storage along with staff dining. One thing I do want to just bring attention to is in the upper left-hand corner of this is Charrington Specialists, those are all of our additional support specialists in that building that help with our student population, something that when this building was built, was not built for those folks to be part of the educational experience, so we have to adjust for that as well.
I'm just wondering if you can briefly explain, because it'll come up over and over again, when we say, these rooms are undersized, right? Where that calculation comes from, that's not us standing there saying this room is undersized, right? Do you want to go through that a little bit?
So again, thank you for that question. That flows back to, all of this is being assessed and through the eyes of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. They actually have a whole table, and we use this most in the middle school, the new elementary that opened, especially new spaces, and they have a whole very prescriptive formula for how big classrooms are, art rooms, bathrooms, every single space you see drawn up that you could ever imagine that they would co-fund, has a library part that you have to adhere to. Even just a share says, these are the type of flooring systems, the type of lighting, technology, cabinetry, you name it, they basically have a model of each one that you could grab and say, and that's how they would be so formula-driven, both in their delivery of projects, but their cost estimating. And again, that's how we're able to catch up with them, so to speak, as we mirror and have discussions with them on what we think's important.
Great, thank you for that explanation, because I think it's really important for everyone to understand that this is a state, I guess I'll call it a standard, right? In some sense, that we're measuring against.
And you guys, some of you know, and others have probably heard, that I am always one that says, yeah, but I don't always agree with the state's standards, and I know that we always do look at what we think is more appropriate and most appropriate here in our particular community. Yeah, they have very good standards, and they have very strong rationale for them. Sometimes other people have other ideas.
If I could elaborate, so it's a kit of parts, but it's really up to the local community to decide both how you're, which kit of parts you want to use, how you want to assemble them, and they do give options for having variances or tweaking of that. So it's linear, yet it has flexibility in it. So yes, as we did at the first, the new middle school and elementary, the district can customize it, in other words, to suit our preferred needs, our community needs, it's not so prescriptive that we can't change to try and suit our needs better.
That flexibility still means that we will be able to access that full amount of that 35% of.
Yes, that flexibility is within, again, if they wouldn't approve it, it would become an L-5, if we wanted to do something with, but they generally, in terms of size and program, are usually, I mean, they've been doing this for 20-some years as a state agency, they're usually pretty reasonable in terms of allowing you to flex a little bit, both in what you have in the rooms and the size, et cetera. It's really kit of parts, and we can arrange them anywhere we want in that room, again, back to that standard.
I just wanted to highlight too, Carrie kind of hit a little bit on some of the services that when these buildings were built, but maybe it's hard to read for the audience, so just kind of wanted to highlight some of the things like school counselors, occupational therapists, physical therapists, reading tutors, EL tutors, so our students who are learning English that need extra support. So those are all, some of those smaller room spaces that are included in there, that just weren't needed when these buildings were built, because we didn't offer those services, no one offered them back then. So those are really important things that we need, not just the additional classroom space, but those smaller rooms also to meet the kids' needs.
So we're going to move into the image of what the renovations would look like. So the light, moderate, and heavy, it's alteration and addition, it's really the renovation scale. So in green, you'll find that that's the light, which means that walls, flooring, ceilings, lighting, all are touched, walls are prepped for new finishes as well. In the moderate classrooms, which are in yellow on this page, they get everything in the light alterations, plus 50% of the existing interior walls and partitions are removed and relocated, minor modifications to the remaining interior partitions, so they get the ceiling walls, fixtures, all of that. Install new walls, doors, mechanical electrical systems where required, and then they get all the finishes replaced. Heavy alterations, which are in red, are complete removal of all interior walls and partitions and ceilings, all the mechanical and electrical system, and basically you take that space to a shell. Then it's typically done with restructuring, new layouts and infrastructure, you're going to install new walls, new doors, mechanical electrical system, ceiling lights, and room finishes. There will be a diagram that goes along with each one of the buildings. Again, I'm a visual person, I find this very helpful when you look at aligning this to where some of our costs are going to align as well. Okay, Huber Ridge. So the original portion of Huber Ridge was built in 1963, had an addition in 1967, again in 1972. You'll see there in pink is the Secured Entry Project. Deficiencies or needs for this building are an undersized student dining, again, the music and art spaces are undersized, lack of access to the outside playground area. So currently, as students exit the cafeteria, they are going through educational spaces or hallways, and that can be relatively disruptive, it is recess. And they have no stage at this building. So through more conversations, we did identify, much like we have done at Woody Ear and Anne Hurst, the need for an addition. This one also has the art and music within that space, and small group rooms, a set of restrooms, along with a couple of classrooms, as we adjust the kindergarten classroom sizes at this location, with the restrooms in those spaces as well. Small addition on the front of the building to get the student dining up to the correct size, and renovation of some space so that a stage becomes available at this location. You can tell by the directional arrows that we also looked at what that is to go out to the playgrounds or outdoor spaces, and to return to their classrooms. I said it was going to go faster, but I didn't take into play the, there we go, clicker. So again, you can see the green, yellow, red, or light, moderate, and heavy alterations for this building. One thing I do want to note, and you'll see it in these, all of these, is even where we've had the Secured Entry Projects, which are newer construction projects, and they've been completed, you'll have some coloration in there, because there may still be above-ceiling work that needs to be done via suppression, fire alarms, yeah, so, other systems. So it's important, because I'm sure that it can be confusing at times. Mark Twain and Robert Frost are going to go back-to-back, they were both built in 1973, very identical buildings, although some of the spaces within the buildings were utilized differently. From a floor plan standpoint, they look very much the same. They were built largely in 1973 and had an addition in 2001. You will also see in 2001 is when they put up their internal walls, because they were also an open concept school. So you'll see that both here and at Robert Frost, and in 2021 was their Secured Entry Project, where they flip-flopped a kindergarten classroom for the front office. Come on. Third time's a charm. Here, one of the challenges is a significantly undersized student dining space and kitchen serving space. This building and Robert Frost also do not have stages. This will allow for programming within the school to be a little more, I don't know, easy, ease of use. There's the addition of some specialized learning classrooms here as well, to address the growing need in the district, small group rooms. Their media center and their gymnasium are both open concept still, they do not have walls, so that is something that this project can address as well. Again, I want to note that this is not a design, one of the things to call out here is that the main supply for the building is located where that little red box is, so just looking at the cost to move that, because it's quite costly, so it's kind of designed around that at this point. So there's a little bit more on the alteration or renovation slides here in yellow, and that is because when we did open concept, we have some modular wall systems. So addition of electrical or plumbing or casework to those become very challenging, often electrical's surface mount, you can't put water through them, or mount casework to them. And you'll see the same at Robert Frost, same dates. Again, addition, a stage, also moving the kindergarten classroom at both these locations in proximity to the other two kindergarten classrooms, adding a restroom in that space. But it's very similar. Blendon Middle School, the original part of the building was built in 1967, had an addition in 1969, a small one in 1980, and another small one in 2002. Their Secured Entry Project was noted down there in pink in 2022. And they had a project in their food service area, in their serving area in 2014, that was funded by the food service funds, so that's noted in light purple. Blendon, their deficiencies or needs come in small commons, small kitchen, they do not have a stage either at this location, unlike our other middle schools, so this would be an opportunity to address that. And that's what you'll see in this image. So to the left of the gym, you see a small addition for, to add a stage and then support spaces with that. Their bleachers are on the internal wall of the gym opposite the stage, so it's kind of a natural placement for that. And then an addition on the back of the building to expand the food service and student dining areas, and then those spaces would then become converted to small group instructions and a couple of classrooms there in the commons to expand those spaces, and some small group So you can see here how the renovations go, light, moderate, heavy in this location as well. We looked at teaming in our middle schools, and this also allows there to be two sixth grade teams to the right side of this scale, I hate that I don't have a pointer to be able to point that out, but it would go, go back one, so you can see it, science, and then three support, not three support, three gen ed classrooms in proximity on both the upper and lower parts of that hallway. So trying to be intentional, working with
Design.
Design Group, along with our executive leadership team, to understand programming in the buildings, and what those would be. Walnut Springs Middle School. So Walnut Springs was largely built in 1964, it had an addition in 1972, another in 1987, a small addition in 2001, and then their renovation to their media center in 2015, you'll see some restroom renovations in there in the smaller spaces, and then their Secured Entry Project in 2023, which we mentioned earlier today. Needs for this building largely come with a renovation of a building that's from, originally from 1964. Go to allow us to address some building, some programming needs, so specialized learning classrooms, small group instruction, all of our, sorry, all of our support personnel will also have spaces within this building. A lot of times, and in most of these buildings, it's, they're sharing spaces, so they're splitting traditional classrooms into smaller spaces for use. Also expanding the student dining into what's currently a courtyard that they can cut through, but when it's cold or wet outside, that can be a little problematic, so putting some type of roofing on that to allow that to become part of the building, as well as student dining space. One thing to note here is that there's no addition on this building. So you do see here that it is a significant amount of light renovations, a fair amount of moderate, and some small, heavy renovations here.
Just a quick question about that. So a building like this, what, 1967 primarily, if it wasn't a house from 1967, we'd all be able to walk in and know whether or not any upgrades had been made, I mean, we'd just know right off the bat. But when you look at Walnut Springs, obviously there've been some additions to it, but would you say, I mean, with the light amount of alteration we're talking about, that that has not been done before for most of the building? Or there's been some, I mean, there's obviously been some paint touch-up and stuff, and that's primarily it?
Sure. So remember, the Facility Master Plan was designed to address those patchwork projects that we do over time. We do flooring replacements, you saw that those are still on some upcoming lists through this year. We do painting, we do address things as they come up. From a preventative maintenance standpoint, our maintenance team can identify when it's time, and we do things here and there. Walnut Springs is a unique building, that their custodian has been there for a significant amount of time, and takes quite a bit of pride in this building. So can you tell? Sure. Oftentimes, it's in the design of the building, but it is well taken care of.
Yeah. And I ask, oh, sorry.
Nope.
I ask that with this one, just because I think when you walk into Walnut Springs, it's not a building that says to you, this building was built in 1967. I went there, I think the custodian might have started while I was there. So, I mean, seriously?
Yes, he did, he did.
He's done a phenomenal job.
Yes, he has.
But some of the behind-the-wall stuff, I'm quite sure, has not seen much love in all that time. So I just, it can be deceptive, when we really take good care of our buildings in that cosmetic front, so, yeah.
The facilities team does a wonderful job of making sure that they address the needs or plan forward and CM. What these, this also can help us address is classrooms that don't have natural light, and I have failed to mention that on the other buildings as well. That is in all of our conversations, is that introduction of natural light, and how we would accomplish that in a building where you can see the center part. We're not carving out hallways to the outside, so we could introduce those through the use of light tubes in the ceiling, try to maximize what we can get from the outside in.
And we've always, already done, we have already completed some renovations here, right?
Correct.
I think 2015, 16?
Yeah.
So the media center is absolutely amazing, I don't know if you have a picture of it on here, do you?
Oh, I don't.
That's okay, but, so some of the items have been addressed, and we've actually, were you here then, Dorn? Like, they brought the outside in with that. Like they brought the outside in with that media center, so it's very much a nice flex space.
So the media center is actually one of our award winning projects that was completed by Mr. LaRose
Oh.
prior to my arrival. It's a fantastic space, and we have a lot of hit and miss projects, not hit and miss, but smaller portions of projects that have completed the building. When I look at Walnut Springs, I'm seeing the casework that has existed since 1967 that that needs as we go through science classrooms every year. It's like, okay, which countertops are we going to do this year? Right? So this is that wholesale renovation of the building that also adds electrical outlet, electrical supply for all of the devices and Chromebooks. So it's, it's definitely not 1967 or whatever year this was in terms of how we use a building, and so it has to be modernized for that purpose as well. And I will say, I think the HVAC has probably been redone maybe three times because it's an every 20 year life cycle. So things have life cycles. They have been addressed, but your perception of it when you walk in the building is, we need, we need a little paint.
I also think that these are the opportunities to bring it up to that modern classroom. All right. And the last building, if I can get this to progress, is Westerville North High School. So Westerville North High School, the original part is outlined in blue, and you'll see it in the center there, 1975. It then got what I sometimes refer to as a hug right around it. In 1987, we wrapped the building all the way back. That's when the theater was actually put on this building and a hallway along the backside and the auxiliary gym. And then that did require an expansion in the mechanical room, and there was another art space just at the top of the page there. You'll see a small box that kind of looks like it's sitting in the parking lot. That's actually the mezzanine within that auxiliary gym. It's just the way that the floor plans are designed. And then in 1993, the band room was added on to that space. And again, the mezzanine for that is on the right hand side of the page. It lives within the band room, not in the parking lot. You see, the rest of that is renovations. In 2016, the renovation of the shop was put in there. It's a wonderful program, but we want to call that out as well. So one of the challenges with North we have is 76% of the classrooms, at least 76% of the classrooms have no natural light. Just through building design, that's one of the differences between Westerville North and Westerville South from a renovation standpoint. South has beautiful exterior lighting. We really were able to, and not the we in the room, Mr. LaRose and Mr. Dorn here were able to really capture a lot of the opportunity there through that curtain wall replacement. So with Westerville North, you're not going to see a block and stack diagram, and you're not going to see a renovation stage because through conversations that we're having with Westerville North, as we look at that, that credit that we're coming up against, and we have 35% that we've earned so far in the work that's been done in the phase one of the facility master plan, it's about $24 million in credits right now with phase one. And knowing the inflationary cost of what we see in construction right now and what it would take to get North to meet the same expectations that we want in our educational programs at our high school. We recognize that we may be looking at amendments to the second phase of the facility master plan, and we'll talk a little bit about that. North likely will come with a recommendation from the OFCC as to how we'll address this building. It could be renovation, a significant renovation, and it could mean partial replacement. We don't have that information yet. The OFCC, their costsets come out in May. We anticipate receiving that information, so it's a little early. But at that point, to understand is, can take that front part of the building, and we could potentially replace the front part of the building. So it might make sense, I would recommend, that we consider holding off to see if we get that in the future. Yes, you can add, of course.
So back to the OFCC, the state of Ohio. You can see, I love it. Full disclosure, I used to work there, so hey, dreaded government worker.
Why I'm nice about it when you're sitting there.
They're good people. So I will share in terms of their model, when Mrs. Dennis talked about the replacement model, the state has a, again, formula. So when they're assessing it, looking at a building, they actually look at every one of those original and additions, and they look at just the building as it exists today and say, what are the costs to renovate as is to bring it up to quote unquote today's standards? When they're doing that, they have what's called a two thirds rule. So if the cost to renovate, let's just say of the 1975 is where Mrs. Dennis was going, the 1975, if it's equal to or exceeds two thirds the cost of replacing that with all new, so they have a two thirds rule, they will recommend to the school district that they actually replace that component. And again, they'll do that for actually all of those initial feedback and potential is that that may be where they land on that 75 original that their model would recommend. Again, it's not a band date. It's, it's a baseline for discussion between the two parties, the two, both the school district and the state as we move forward. But it's most likely where we believe they'll, they'll be their starting point for that 75 original component.
I think another fair call out, too, is that portion of the building also has those modular walls that we see at Robert Frost and Mark Twain Elementary School from where renovations were done at these buildings. there we go. We've can identify that there's other facility needs that the district is hearing more about. We have outgrown our preschool here at the Early Learning Center. We have five sections, which shows a half day program, so five sections is being held at our Point View Middle, our Point View Elementary School just around the corner from here. As you can imagine, that puts some pressure on the program. And then our high school music programs. Interestingly enough, we had some public comment tonight about our theater spaces. So I can promise you, I did not pay him. We just met tonight, but I did give him iPhone number so we can talk some more. Transitioning into this position, I was receiving, Doug's been receiving, Mr. Schwartz has been receiving a significant number of needs. We get requests, whether it's lighting, whether it's soundboards, it's microphones from our band, it's storage and outdoor practice spaces, our, our music programs in general, it can be risers that need replace, replacement. You know, with some of that, believe it or not, is like a significant cost. I have sat down, we have sat down with the theater directors and their tech directors. We've sat down with our band booster parents to hear together what their needs and requests are. And I think that we need to come up with a plan to, to address those. Additionally, our high schools stadium support spaces. And what that is, is it's restrooms, it's concession, it's a lack of locker room space outside. All three of our high schools have different offerings when you're there. So again, when you look at what that experience is like at all three high schools, from a music standpoint, a theater standpoint, as well as our athletic standpoint. And then the continued safety and security updates. Like I mentioned earlier, that had its own phasing as well. So we've addressed our secured entry projects, expansion of our cameras, our secured lighting outside was actually moved up in that project. We had an option for some rebate work, and it was done early and completed. So now it's time to look at signage, wayfinding. There was a knock on the door? Yeah, chairs, furniture. So signage, both wayfinding outside of the building on the grounds as well as inside of the buildings, and fencing of district property, and then bollards, which are, you know, the things that prevent stuff from coming into the front of your building. Sometimes they're big yellow
Concrete posts.
Concrete posts. Sometimes they're round balls if you shop at that store. So I don't anticipate ours would look like either one of those, but that is part of that next phase. And then continued growth of our access control and camera systems. We've made great progress, but there's still work to be done there. And then window safety film at main entry areas, so that's the next phase of the safety and security updates. Questions about any of that stuff?
I guess I just have a question. I know you said the ELC that we've outgrown our pre K, which is great. I love hearing all the little kids downstairs. I'm imagining that you guys are still in the process of thinking through what that might look like and where that might go, and when might we have a better sense of what that might be?
For sure. So something that we are starting to look at is what has that, how has that program grown over time? We are looking at the Future Think numbers that came in. We got an initial, initial report, but we need to get into those numbers, and then we want to push a little bit, make sure that it's actually reporting as we see appropriate. In terms of what additional kind of preschool space here would look like, would, could potentially mean an addition to this building, which there is land for that on the other side. So that's how we would likely address that at this time. Any other questions? Man, I've got time by this thing. Oh, there you go. So I'll let you. I've talked a lot.
So again, how do we get from, we're talking about phase two, and how do we finish things up with our partner, OFCC, in the out planning approval process? So again, just looking back real quick, mentioned it earlier, this, this governing body on December 11th passed a resolution to do what's called a letter of intent to participate in the OFCC ELP program or FMP, Facilities Master Plan Phase Two. March 8th, we've made note of it a couple of times. Future Think, their consultant, provided their updated enrollment projections. We actually had another meeting with it today, kind of talking through what are some of the counterpoints, if we, if you will, that we can bring back to them, areas we think maybe they've omitted or not taken a deep enough dive to be sure the numbers are as accurate as they can be. In April, the state is telling us they need to be at some sense of finality in terms of the ELP Phase Two project scope and budget. Again, but they actually, it was their assessment, they have new numbers that come out in May, so there's lots of moving parts. But what ultimately matters in terms of moving forward is to, depending on when this body possibly goes for some type of, to procure dollars in the future, that will ultimately drive the end dates, if you will. So we're talking about is this full phase or phase adjustment? And as Mrs. Dennis said, we're here today to start talking, recommend that maybe there's an adjustment. And it's important to note for the public that Phase One, it had a committee, it had certain mandates or recommendations, but even this body and the facilities department whatnot amended that. For instance, she noted Ann Hurst is not 55 years old, yet it was included or amended to be part of Phase One. We're proposing very much the same, that we look at the Phase Two and try to map out a future that makes the most sense, both financially and fiduciary standpoint as building operators and owners. Use of modulators is another thing we're recommending. We believe based on the student and staff experience, and more importantly, inflationary cost factors. So what this is, so the public understands as well as the board, is bringing in temporary classrooms specific only to construction. This is not a need or capacity issue. This is to help expedite the work in a more timely and efficient manner. Really, what it means for the public and students and staff is we can do some of the building during the school year. We're not married and limited, if you will, to just Christmas break, spring break, summer. That can cause some challenges, that can have a net effect in terms of dollars by that start and stop. Think if you did renovations at your own home, you want to finish them at once versus do them in piecemeal. But we're still doing the best we can and being very good at doing that, but we'd like to be better and look at introducing modulators, which we believe will be a savings, both in time and actually dollars in terms of the overall budget. And then I can't speak a whole lot to this, so to speak, but the bond, the value, the threshold, where is that millage rate that possibly you're comfortable in concert with recommendations from the treasurer of how far, where can we take it and, and build in that phase, if you will, against the cost? Did want to make a note, I'm trying to remember if we have a slide that talks about this. The costing we're seeing, just for the public to know, we all know inflation has been, it was fairly high during COVID. I got to work on some projects during COVID, and it was amazing what was happening. But our consultants, you saw a list of them earlier, as was the state's very own costing model, we're seeing and forecasting that these projects, if we were to move forward with them in the next few years, could have roughly a 56% cost increase over just two or three years ago, when the new middle school was trying to come out of the ground. That's incredible, but that's actually what the market's doing. We also know there's a lot of pressures here in central Ohio with the building cost, both from construction and design. So that's also reflected in that fairly large percentage increase, if you will, that we have to take into account as we move forward. The other, the next phase in terms of bringing consultants on board, we've got a request for qualifications for architect engineering firm. This would be the team, so again, we had a design group doing some preliminary block and stacking, looking at how needs and programmatic changes. This would actually be the team that would move us forward if the board wishes to move forward in terms of actually undertaking the design, taking it to the next level, ultimately leading us into designing construction should we choose to go forward and have funding. Qualifications are due April 3rd, just to share.
The April 2024 final ELP Phase Two project scope slash budget, how finite does that need to be? Because what I'm sitting over here, and I know I've been looking pensive, I guess. When we did Phase One, as, as you mentioned, Doug, we had a significant amount of community involvement, and it really helped shape our priorities, helped shape what we were going to do. It's the reason that Ann Hurst came up to the level of priority that it did. And that, that community involvement was, I think, key to the success of what we've done and the success within the community as regards to community's desire to participate. I want to make sure that we don't move so quickly that we overlook the need to bring the community in to what we decide to do. So how finite does that have to be?
Hey, oh, yeah. Go for it.
If you recall, I rejoined our team in 2017, the fall of 2017, when the committee actually started meeting. And so that, the results of that committee work and extensive community engagement is the 10 year facility master plan that we have on the board today.
Yeah, right.
So, so this is still that committee's work and recommendation, the actual recommendations from the committee, it was really interesting. They made a comment in the presentation to the board that this is where we are right now. We understand that you're going to have to make changes to this as you move forward down the road. And that's how we ended up with not repurposing Emerson and Hamby and
Right.
actually adding Ann Hurst in. So we've had an extensive amount. I think when this scope gets maybe truncated a little bit, it's not about not doing the work, but it's about what's the timing of the work in comparison to that really large chunk that we took. All those buildings were 55 years or older at that particular point in time when we made that, that cutoff for the first five year plan, with the exception of Ann Hurst and the two new buildings. To now, these buildings are in that second group, but some of them haven't hit 55 yet. And so that's where the consideration really, you start to think about, is it this five years or is it the next five years we should address those? And really, what should the long term planning be? What should that cycle look like? Because there's a big jump after this group to the next group. I think it might be Heritage, Walnut, McVeigh, like another 15 years. So a lot to look at, but there won't be anything that we don't get feedback from the community about, I'm sure.
And that's what I want to make sure that we do. I'm not suggesting that we resurrect the community, the committee that we had, because that was more intense than we need. But I also know that significant time has elapsed, and I want to make sure And I want to make sure that what we move ahead with, we do engage in ways that make sense. So I want to make sure that we don't shut off avenues, well, I hate to use the word prematurely, but shut off avenues that the community might need to talk to us and share thoughts and, and shape things. So I just want to make sure that as we look at scope and budget, that we haven't sandwiched things so tightly that there's no room.
Sure, and we definitely do want some community feedback on the concepts of, should we wait until we're actually eligible for funding from the state? I mean, if we're going to, $24 million in the first phase, which will probably grow still, maybe another $30 million in the second phase, and then you get your 35% of the project plus the 50 million that you've already banked in credit, waiting for that appropriate time to actually use it, you've got to have to have a project for it.
Right.
So, but we definitely need to get some feedback.
Yeah.
One thing too, I wanted to point out is we just started our district strategic planning process, which I know you were there the other night for that. And our next session will actually be on this facilities plan. And we have invited those committee members to attend or watch this. So I think we'll have an opportunity there to get some feedback from that big community group as well.
Yes, and I don't, I don't know why they're not all here. I mean, we told them, you know, give up three hours of your night, it's going to be great, you'll love it. But I do appreciate you sending the link out to them, that was great.
We do have one.
We have one, yeah.
Thank you for being here.
So I do think that's important. I just want to make sure that we never, it's, you know, I'm full of what must we never forget tonight? And that's something we must never forget.
Well, and I know that we've involved district leadership. And I think that it's important too, as we move forward, not only from a community standpoint, but also from our teachers and all of our support staff that are in the building as well. To make sure that we get some of that feedback as to what has worked, to make sure we're not missing it. This is our opportunity. I don't anticipate in my lifetime to see this done again. So I want to make sure that we do push that work forward with that in mind.
I don't know about your lifetime, I hope you're going to be around a lot longer than that.
I appreciate you all thinking I'm not young, we're just going to like roll on.
If you think about it, when you look at each of those pictures, each of those plans, you can see very discreet points in time that the district had to deal with the facilities, to keep the facilities going along as well, as they have. And the community has really taken good care of these facilities, you know, through its district. But you know, you've got that, what do we got? We've got the early 70s, the late 80s, the early 2000s. You can see this happen about every 15 to 20 years. Education changes so much, and student needs change so much, and populations change so much, that those bones that we put together need reshaped. And it's, you know, I think it's important that we look at it as a continuum of life within the district. Because each one of those phases shows significant changes in the way we live as a society.
So. That is the last slide. I did not put up any questions because this is a work session and it is open. Open conversation, and I, I just want to go back and revisit on that conversation and recommendation that the board can consider amending the second phase of the facility master plan. At this time, and just looking at the buildings, we could align this next phase to address the buildings that were built in the 60s. And that would be four of the buildings that were presented to you tonight. And then look at the buildings in the 70s, that were built in the 70s, as an additional phase of the facility master plan.
And just so we can recap that really quickly, so the public knows, those four buildings?
Are Charrington Elementary School, Huber Ridge Elementary School, Blendon Middle School, and Walnut Springs Middle School.
And so then the three would be Westerville North, Robert Frost, and Mark Twain?
Yep, perfect.
And that is your recommendation at this point?
That is my recommendation at this point.
And then you want to reiterate what you guys are thinking about North?
So we believe that North will come at that two-thirds. Especially as we believe that we might need to wait on that work a little bit. So if it comes at the two-thirds, and we're looking at a partial replacement of the academic spaces, see academic spaces maintaining the back part of the building there. And we will hope to see, and I think that's important because it does depend on state funding as to when we might become eligible for those credits, that at the time in which we could do that work would be when those credits become available. So that's 35% of what's approved, plus when you do the work at the time, you get that 35 cents per dollar off the top of the project at that time. I think that's important to call out as well.
The additional work that was up there, not having to do with the buildings particularly, but like the ELC and some of the other stuff, would that still be included in the Phase Two of the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
We would include that work. So safety and security updates, addressing some of our extracurricular needs and theater, band, music, some athletic space as well, as our, our youngest student population in our preschool.
And as we continue to look forward, I think it's also important to highlight for our community, because when we did start the project on South, we said a full renovation, and we're not done. We're just continuing. And it is a major focus of this team.
Yeah, I, I want to thank you for bringing that up. South has been funded using districts' existing funding. And I think that's an important, it's done outside of this facility master plan work.
Correct.
And we are finishing the initial scope. The stuff that was bid and contracted is finishing up this next summer. So now, Mr. Schwartz and I are spending some time with building leadership to identify what additional scope can be done to meet the needs. And so you will, at some point, probably in the near future, look to have some additional recommendations in front of you to address South.
Yes. So I guess my question is, so we have some things that we all need to think about and work through in the strategic planning committee too. In April, are we being asked to make a decision? Or when is the?
So we're wait, again, this is all based, this is all based on the presumption that we would go for a bond issue in November. We haven't really talked about that, but that's what the April date is driving towards potentially. If that is not the date for that, then the dates slide accordingly. So that is what drives it, at what point are we seeking the funds? And then you back and engineer the date into that.
So as the board knows, I, I am recommending that we look at an operating levy for the November of this year. And so this would be, I would recommend that that would be part of that. We do have some bond funds that are falling off in 2027 that we can leverage with that ask from the community to help reduce the mileage amount. So I would recommend that we would consider that combination ballot issue, just as we had done with the first phase of the facility plan.
I think, based on the volume of work that's in front of the team here, if any pieces could be removed from the table, that would be very helpful for work progressing with these other components. So if the desire is to consider Westerville North, not during this term, but during the next cycle, it would be helpful to know that relatively soon, not even April, because we are spending resources on those conversations right now. And so that would be the same with Mark Twain and Robert Frost.
That would also bring forth another resolution for the board, just like the one that came previously to re-enter that Phase Two of the facility master plan with OFCC, to amend the second phase of the facility master plan with the OFCC. So there would be another point in which you guys would need to approve, yes?
So I would say at this point, I'm comfortable with that, but I would like to hear feedback from strategic planning to see what the community is thinking. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. And then, you know, the other four buildings that we're talking about, seeing some funds and what that would cost and what that would look like to our, our voters, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
So would I, with the one caveat that I want to understand a little bit better. So Robert Frost and Mark Twain, I mean, we're sort of putting them potentially later because of the date of construction, which makes a lot of sense, right? But I, I just want to make sure that the, the needs in terms of delivering education to students at Robert Frost and Mark Twain are not higher than any of those other buildings in the 1960s group. Does that make sense? So the year of construction makes a lot of sense as a basis for the decision, but I just want to make sure that the educational needs aren't higher there than in some of the 60s group, to repeat the same thing exactly twice, but just make sure I'm clear.
So I'm not sure that I would ever say that one building has higher needs than another building does, from that standpoint. I feel that Mark Twain and Robert Frost, around a classroom standpoint, have adequate space to do the work in which is in front of them at this time. With the opening of another France Elementary School, it addressed Mark Twain's enrollment numbers, which were quite high for that building, square footage. So I think at this time, they can, they can move forward. I would like to see us potentially address the open gymnasium and the media center ahead of that work that would be recommended as part of a facility master plan, because we can do that with our permanent improvement fund, potentially, before we get to addressing the other needs of the building.
Thanks. Makes a lot of sense. Those, there are a couple of smaller projects that can be carved off and make a difference, yeah.
Much like the balcony enclosures at McVeigh, Wilder, and Heritage. We do projects like that, as we identify that there is a need for those projects to be done. We continue to do HVAC work at these buildings, that doesn't stop. Roofing projects don't stop. So the building definitely will have the, the don't stop needs addressed. This is just looking more at a whole building renovation.
Great, thanks.
I have a question regarding the kind of community input piece of this. So if we are saying that we would like the community to have some input on this before we make any kind of decisions as to what buildings are included, which aren't, what's the process look like for that?
So I, we, Doug is lucky enough to sit on the strategic planning committee. I'm there as part of the support for that committee. Are going to present this information to them at the April meeting. So I think we could openly ask for some feedback about what that would be like at that meeting. It is comprised of district personnel along with community members, business partners. 50? Yeah, close to 50 individuals that participate in the strategic planning committee. So that would be.
When is that next meeting?
April, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
10th or something?
I know. 10th?
Don't quote me on that, I think the 10th.
It is, the 10th.
So we could solicit some information or some feedback at that meeting.
I think, you know, as, as we look for feedback and any opportunities we might choose to use strategic planning or anything else we might choose, the idea of, I think Jen, the phrase used was carving out, or maybe that was over here at this table. But the idea of carving out pieces that would not necessarily need to be funded in this way is important. And it also goes back, Scott, to what you were talking about, about how might we remove some of this work? So we reduce, we reduce the ask and we reduce the level of work that needs to be done without compromising the educational program. So I'm, I'm very interested in that, especially given the massive increase in construction costs that are happening now and will happen in the future with Intel coming in. So that, I think, as we look at how we talk about this, needs to be something that we are sharing as well. Because it's not a, it's all this, or it's all that, and it's nothing here. It's, it's a function of this, or this could be pulled, or this could wait.
I might also add, anyone watching this at home or watching, or you know, dug into this or had a conversation can always, you know, call up the district, I'm sorry, come here, talk to one of us. So there's ample opportunity to have some input into that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I also wanted to share, so you know I have a findings committee that's working on reviewing various things. Carrie will be presenting to them on April the 1st, and so we'll also have an opportunity to get feedback from those folks.
And I just wanted to make you aware that it's only been about four years, maybe, maybe five, that we completely redid the air handling units at both Frost and Twain. So they're, they're fresh and early in their cycle right now.
Thank you.
See, let's look for any other groups that it makes sense to slide that in, because Carrie, you're getting so good at this presentation. But in addition to the finance committee, the strategic planning committee, we may want to see whether there's any desire on the parent council to hear about this as well.
Yeah.
We can plug this video network-wise too, with the chamber. They can go and watch it. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. May I have a resolution to reinstate Robert's Rules of Order?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Ms. Marshall.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.